Good evening. And welcome to the June 8, 2020, meeting of the Muskogee Municipal Authority. Roll call, please.
Mayor Janie Boydston.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Here.
Marlon Coleman.
Here.
Ivory Van.
Here.
Jamie Stout.
Here.
Evelyn Hibbs.
Here.
Alex Reynolds.
Here.
Stephanie Morgan.
Here.
Tracy McGee.
Here.
Well, we're all here, one way or another. Item one, please.
Consider approval of the Muskogee Municipal Authority minutes of May 11, 2020.
Okay, you've had a chance to look at the minutes.
This is Councilor Stout, move for approval.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Morgan.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Evelyn Hibbs.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Marlon Coleman.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Janie Boydston.
Yes, and the motion carries. Item two.
Consider approval of MMA claims for the month ending May 31, 2020.
Mr. Miller.
Thank you, Mayor. You have before you the claims for the MMA for this month. We do recommend approval and be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, do we have a motion?
This is Councilman Ivory Van, I make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Morgan. Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Evelyn Hibbs.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Marlon Coleman.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Janie Boydston.
Yes, and the motion carries, and that completes our agenda for the municipal authority. So we will adjourn that meeting and open the Muskogee City Council meeting of June 8, 2020. Please stand for the invocation by Councilmember Marlon Coleman, followed by the flag salute.
Let us pray. Dear Lord, we come before you to give you thanks for allowing us to be present on another day. And I pray your blessing, oh God, first for one of our colleagues and her son, the son of Evelyn Hibbs, right now. Lord, for we know that he is ailing. And I pray in Jesus's name, oh God, for divine intervention on his behalf. And Lord, I pray for Evelyn as a mother, oh God, that her prayer may be answered as well, that she may be comforted by the power of your Holy Spirit. And then, Lord, I pray your blessing, oh God, upon us as a governing body. Father, we know that we have survived many obstacles, not unique to us. But I pray, oh God, for a unique blessing for the city of Muskogee right now. Lord, that as we prepare to move forward into new ventures and new areas, God, that you will guide us by the power of your Holy Spirit. Lord, that you will allow the people of Muskogee, as well as those who are elected, to govern, oh God, according to the best interests of people, oh Lord. And where others, oh God, may not feel that way. I pray your blessing, oh God, that you will unify our community, unify our council, unify us, oh God, as a people. These blessings we ask in Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Janie Boydston.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Here.
Marlon Coleman.
Here.
Ivory Van.
Here.
Jamie Stout.
Here.
Evelyn Hibbs.
Here.
Alex Reynolds.
Here.
Stephanie Morgan.
Here.
Tracy McGee.
Here.
Well, we're all still here. You've had a chance to examine the minutes of the City Council's special call, May 4, 2020, meeting. Regular session, May 11, 2020. Special call, May 18, 2020. And special call, May 21, 2020. What is your pleasure?
This is Councilor Stout, move for approval.
Councilwoman Morgan, second.
Okay, any discussion? Roll call.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Morgan.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Evelyn Hibbs.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Marlon Coleman.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Janie Boydston.
Yes, and the motion carries. The consent agenda is comprised of items one through five. Is there anything any of you want to move to the regular agenda?
Councilor Coleman moved to approve the consent agenda.
Councilor Stout, second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Morgan.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Evelyn Hibbs.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Marlon Coleman.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Janie Boydston.
Yes, and the motion carries. Item six, please.
Hold a public hearing and take action on the approval of ordinance number 4094A to close the right-of-way shown as Southeast Street, south of East Madison Street, lying between block 303 and 304, Muskogee original town site. More particularly described in the ordinance, providing for severability and setting an effective date, or take other necessary action.
Okay, we will open the public hearing and hear from Ms. Callahan.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Council members, this is a request from Amy Kaiser. She is an adjacent property owner. She has requested to close the right-of-way that's been plotted and identified as Southeast Street. It is between on Madison and East, south of Madison, on East Street. Property is located between block 303 and 304. This is to allow for her to take it on to District Court, to vacate it, so that she and the other adjacent property owner can expand their existing properties. Subdivision review, planning commission, and public works recommended approval, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions for Ms. Callahan or comments? We need to close the public hearing, then. And what is your pleasure?
This is Councilor Stout, I move for approval.
Councilwoman Morgan, second.
All right, any discussion? Roll call.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Morgan.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Evelyn Hibbs.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Marlon Coleman.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Janie Boydston.
Yes, and the motion carries. Item seven.
Receive report on the COVID-19 pandemic in Muskogee, and if necessary, take appropriate action to authorize and approve a subsequent amendment to Resolution Number 2801, declaring a local emergency, or City-County Joint Resolution Number 2803.
Mr. Miller.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. As you're well aware, the pandemic is still ongoing. We are in phase three of the governor's plan. And we do have Tyler Evans from Emergency Management and various, I believe Doug from the Health Department is here as well, or at least available by phone, to give us the most recent update. And I'd ask Tyler to come forward now.
Good afternoon, Ms. Mayor, members of council. As of this morning, there have been 7,205 positive cases of COVID-19 in Oklahoma and 348 deaths. So far, 6,014 of the cases have recovered, which is over 83 percent. The average age of a positive case is 47 years old, and the average age of a death from COVID-19 is 75 years of age. For Muskogee County, we currently have 64 positive cases and six deaths. So far, 31 of those cases have recovered. For the city, there are 45 positive cases, four deaths, and so far, 15 recoveries. There are currently 24 current positive cases that are in our long-term care facilities in Muskogee. That number doesn't include residents and staff. As I stated last week, some of the positive cases that were in one or two of our facilities, they've been moved out. The facilities have been sanitized, have been cleaned, and those positive cases are separate from the other residents in the facilities. As we expected, as testing continues and becomes more available, our numbers are going to go up. And I want everybody to remember, those numbers I'm presenting is a cumulative number. That number will never go down. It continues to build. I spoke with St. Francis today. They currently only have one person under investigation in the hospital for COVID-19. They've been testing, and they have a turnaround time of sometimes two to three hours to get a positive test result back or a negative test result. And at this time, I'd like to introduce Doug Walton from Muskogee County Health Department to speak a little bit further on the subject. Doug?
Yes. Hello, Tyler. Mayor and council members, thank you for having me back. Tyler has shared some of the current data for the state and county and city, so I won't repeat that. We do have numbers that we've been tracking for the other counties in our region that basically touch Muskogee County. And for those, basically, since last week, June 1st, we've seen an increase of six cases in Wagner County to a total of 156 cases for the county with zero fatality. Changes in fatalities since last week, they had 17 total fatalities. Cherokee County has an increase of four in the last week, with still only one fatality to date, no additional since last week. Sequoia County, two new cases since last week, no change in fatalities. Same with Haskell, actually, no new cases there. Three new cases in McIntosh, and one new case in Oakmoggi, and none of those have had any change in deaths. Regarding testing through today, we have collected 559 samples at the Muskogee County Health Department to date. We've only had five positive results through our testing and the public health lab and the lab, OSU Stillwater. Two of those five cases were not residents of Muskogee County. We currently have 29 test kits on hand today, in addition to the ability to conduct approximately 20 of the rapid tests each day, where those results are available in about 15 minutes. Really, we're just continuing to remind people to stay safe and be mindful when they're out in public. Still important to try and maintain the distance of six feet from others. Wash hands frequently, especially before and after eating or touching your face. Wear a face covering whenever in public if possible. Remember, that's mostly to protect others from yourself, in case you happen to be without symptoms but carrying the virus. Limit your time away from home, especially if you're over age 65 or have any underlying health conditions. And then certainly stay at home if you're sick, and call 911 if you need any immediate medical attention. And that's all I've got, Tyler.
Thank you, Mr. Walton. And at this time, I'd like to introduce Trish German with Muskogee County EMS.
Mayor, Councilman, Trish German with Muskogee County EMS. Just a small report on our call volume. It is up, a little bit higher than it was this time last year. Transfers are increasing back and forth to out of county to out of county, or not in county to out of county, and nursing home, hospital transfers. So we're doing good on our transfers. We're staying fogged on all of our ambulances and cleaning as and disinfecting as we're supposed to. Any questions?
Are there any questions for me, or Muskogee County Health Department, or EMS? If not, I'd like to turn the floor back over to Mr. Miller.
Sounds like we may be holding our own.
So, as a final just bit of information for the council, we are pursuing all our reimbursements through FEMA and through the CARES Act. There are some deadlines for that this week, and so we'll be working on that and making sure that our community's prepared, not just now, but for any potential second wave, as much as we can be. That being said, we don't have any action that we recommend, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
All right, anyone have any questions? Well, thank you very much. And we will go to item eight, please.
Consider approval of Resolution Number 2813, amending the City of Muskogee, Oklahoma municipal budget for fiscal year 2019-2020, providing for additional revenues to be transferred to the Hat Box Water Park Fund and the Swim and Fitness Center Fund, in which to pledge said revenues or take other necessary action.
Mr. Miller.
Yes, Mayor, members of council, we did discuss this in our budget retreat, and again, last week at Finance Committee during just the overall budget presentation. And so the 2021 budget is on the agenda for next week, but this is an amendment that we talked about to the current fiscal year budget to make up for revenue lost due to COVID-19. The idea would be to replace lost revenue. There's not any federal funding to do that. We're not eligible for some of the private, for some of the federal grants that are available through the Paycheck Protection Program or other things. So you see before you those budget amendments to transfer money to Hat Box for the water park and for the Swim and Fitness Center. That's basically to replace just the lost revenue that they experienced during this time. So I'd be happy to answer any questions, and otherwise, we would suggest and recommend approval.
All right, council. Questions, comments, motions?
Councilor Coleman, I move for approval.
Councilwoman Morgan, second.
All right, any further discussion? Roll call.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Morgan.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Evelyn Hibbs.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Marlon Coleman.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Janie Boydston.
Yes, and the motion carries. Item nine.
Consider approval of a professional service agreement for the fiscal year 2020-2021 with Michael Gilliard, attorney-at-law, to provide representation for the city in workers' compensation court, or take other necessary action.
Mr. Tucker.
Mayor, members of the council, it's good to see all of you here tonight. This is the time of year when we renew our contracts, which are set to expire on June 30. And so I bring three for you today. We're specifically talking about number nine, which is our agreement with Mr. Gilliard. Mr. Gilliard has provided representation for us on workers' compensation for a number of years. His rate has stayed the same, and we've been pleased with his service. As you, some of you may remember, several years ago, we added local attorney Mike Finerty, who is on Agenda Item Number 10, and we'll talk about separately. But we added him just in case there were any conflicts with cases that might come up, and also because Mr. Gilliard had anticipated that his retirement date may be coming soon. So we wanted to have a contingency plan with Mr. Finerty. And so, so far, Mr. Gilliard has not indicated his desire this year to retire. So we are recommending renewing his agreement for fiscal year '21. I will tell you, the total amount that we have expended on this representation for this last fiscal year was $16,211.70. That also is in your background, if you wanted to actually see that as well. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right. Questions, comments, motions?
Councilor Coleman, I move for approval.
Councilor Stout, a second.
All right, any further discussion? Roll call.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Morgan.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Evelyn Hibbs.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Marlon Coleman.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Janie Boydston.
Yes, and the motion carries. Item 10.
Consider approval of a professional service agreement for the fiscal year 2020-2021 with Michael Finerty, attorney-at-law, to provide representation for the city in workers' compensation court, or take other necessary action.
Mr. Tucker, again.
Mayor, members of the council, this is the second contract that I had referenced regarding Mr. Finerty for our workers' compensation cases. Mr. Finerty's hourly rate has not increased for fiscal year '21. We are recommending a renewal of his agreement, based upon what we have spent year-to-date. The total legal costs for Mr. Finerty were $4,381.40. That information is also in your background. Happy to answer any questions.
Councilor Stout moves for approval.
Councilwoman Morgan, second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Morgan.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Evelyn Hibbs.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Marlon Coleman.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Janie Boydston.
Yes, and the motion carries. Item 11.
Consider approval of a professional service agreement with Ron Wright to provide representation for the city of Muskogee in the four inverse condemnation lawsuits filed in Muskogee County District Court, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the agreement, or take other necessary action.
Mr. Tucker, again.
Mayor, members of the council, this is the third and final agreement that I bring for your approval tonight. As many of you know, Betty Williams has previously represented us since 2007 on these cases. In having conversations with her and conversations with many of you all over the last year, she has indicated her intent to retire. And so with that, we decided we should go in a different direction. And so I met with Mr. Wright of Wright-Stoughton-Wilburn, who many of us know as a well-respected business litigation attorney here in Muskogee. And he was willing to take on these cases. And so the cases I refer to are cases involving England versus City of Muskogee, Lacey versus City of Muskogee, Taff versus City of Muskogee, and finally, Vaughn versus City of Muskogee. So this is a new contract. We do not have a pre-existing contract with Mr. Wright, and this is not a renewal, so it is a completely new agreement. But with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, and I do recommend approval.
Morgan, move for approval.
Reynolds, second.
All right, any questions, comments? Roll call.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Morgan.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Evelyn Hibbs.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Marlon Coleman.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Janie Boydston.
Yes, and the motion carries. Now we come to the place in our agenda where we recognize citizens wishing to speak to the mayor and council. The first one I have signed up is Councilor Ivory Van.
Good evening. First of all, I'd like to ask, I know this is going to take me more than three minutes, but I'd ask for like five minutes.
I'm making motion that we give Ivory five minutes to speak.
Second.
Uh, roll call.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Morgan.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Evelyn Hibbs.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Marlon Coleman.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Janie Boydston.
Yes, and the motion carries.
Yes, my name is Councilman Ivory Van. I reside at 4338 Columbus Street. And what I'd like to bring to you tonight is the Democratic Reform Legislation Bill that they're trying to get through. And it's, the legislation is brought by the Congressional Black Caucus. And the reason they're bringing this legislation to try and pass it is to the excessive force of our police officers, the police officers have been doing to the citizens. And this right here, what I have on, someone asked me what it was when I first come in here. Anyone know, probably don't know what this is. But this right here says NBCLEO, National Black Caucus of Elected Officials. So when I go to the National League of Cities, I'm a member of the National Black Caucus of Elected Officials. And this is in municipal terms, but the other one is with the Senate and the representatives in Washington, DC, that's trying to get this bill. Well, anyway, I congratulate the people on Muskogee, Oklahoma. I commend them. I congratulate, I commend them for protesting and protesting in a right and safe way, without rioting, rioting, and all that. It's kind of hard to talk with his mask on. But I congratulate them for that, because, you know, we live in a time nowadays that the police officers, they seem to think we're just people, that they can push on and do any kind of way, and kick people and do anything else to them. And also, I feel for the George Floyd family and all the families that has been through shootings and being with the knee on the neck and all this. I participated, Pastor Coleman participated in a rally out here at Walmart, and I laid on that ground eight minutes and 47 seconds. And that was a long time. I can imagine if someone just was on my knee, on my neck. So, like I say, it's just, just day and time. It's just, all we can do is just really pray and go from there. And I hope, I commend our police department here in Muskogee, Oklahoma. I hope nothing ever, ever happened like that here in Muskogee. Because like I say, you've seen it all over the world, and that, like I say, it just saddened my heart. And I've seen those people riding and going in the stores, breaking up things. That's not part of it. Martin Luther King never would have done anything like that. When Martin Luther King marched, he marched arm in arm. We're, he was the one that got the dogs sicked on him. He was the one that got the fire hoses put on him. And just like the President of the United States said, "Put the dogs on them." You know, that was the most outrageous thing I ever heard, come from a President of the United States. It's ridiculous. You don't have to have the armed troops out there. People are tired. I can see my child laying down there on that ground with a police officer, with his head, his knee on my son's neck or my daughter. I mean, I would be hurt. I mean, really hurt. You know, so we all need to put ourselves in their places. And like I say, I'm proud of Muskogee, Oklahoma. I'm glad to live here, and I'm glad that, like I say, nothing, I hope, ever, ever happens to something like that around here. Also, I'd like to thank the officer downstairs right now that's up here protecting us. It took a long time to get him here, but he's downstairs. I got my back turned to this door, I don't have to worry about it now, because there's an officer right down front that's got a gun on, and he's CLEAK certified. So I want to thank the ones who were involved in doing this, because that's for our protection up here. So again, just keep that in your mind, and keep the family of George Floyd and all the other people that has went through this, that could be us. Keep them all in your prayers. And that's all I have to say tonight, Mayor, and just thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much. The second person signed up to speak is Tricia German.
Thank you, guys, so much for letting me speak tonight. My name is Tricia German. I work for Muskogee County EMS, 200 Callahan, in Muskogee, Oklahoma. I do plan on being here every Monday to speak something about what's going on with our service. And tonight, I have chosen to talk about our car seat program. Guys, this is a really good program for our county, and it's for our county, Muskogee County residents. It's for low-income families that cannot afford a car seat. We give away car seats to low-income. They have to qualify. It's an education program, and we have all sorts of different car seats that we do give away. This is grant money that's given to us, and this year, we've gotten, we were really lucky, and we got a lot of money in. So I plan on giving out a lot of car seats. So hopefully, with this message, you guys can get it out there. Send some people my way to Muskogee County EMS. All they got to do is call up and make an appointment. Now, we do walk-ins on Tuesday. Those aren't for the car seat program. If somebody just needs a car seat installed, they can call me up and say, "I need a car seat installed on Tuesday between 9:00 and noon." So I do install car seats, though. I'm a certified car seat installer. There, as of right now, there's three in Muskogee County, and we plan on trying to send some people. Muskogee PD is planning on trying to send a couple people to this car seat class. It's a three-day class to learn how to put in car seats. So it's, and it's hot right now. So if they take this class, they have to be outside daily putting in car seats. And another thing, it's getting hot outside, guys. Make sure you don't leave your kids and your dogs in the car. If you have outside animals, make sure you water them properly and get them inside occasionally. Does anybody have any questions for me? Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. German. The other gentleman that has signed up is Ryan Lowe. Mr. Lowe, I don't remember you here before, so give us your name and address, please, and you'll have three minutes.
Okay. Ryan Lowe, 3303 Genie Lane, Muskogee, Oklahoma. Understand that you're not able to answer questions, so I'll kind of tell you why I'm here. And if you do have questions for me, I'm at 24th and Oakmoggi, 24th and Oakmoggi. And, and if you do have questions for me, I'm at Twenty-Fourth and Oatmaugie. Twenty-four Carrot Pond is my business, and you're welcome to come in and speak with me anytime. Uh, late last summer, uh, early fall, we were notified by the city that there was going to be some work done in front of our business, and there would, it'd be some, some delays. Uh, we were okay with that. Uh, I'm all for progress for the city and making it look better and, and improving. Uh, um, I believe they're doing the water and the sewer lines and repaving the road. So I know that stuff needs to be done. Uh, started out, they came in and removed the surface of the road. Uh, you know, it's seemed to be a pretty simple process, and from there, uh, it was pretty much downhill. We've, uh, we've watched them hit gas lines. We've had water lines shooting up to the, the power lines there, uh, last week. They hit another water line and flooded the street. Uh, they hit one this morning, and it was a smaller line. And, uh, I watched them just cover it up with dirt, so I'm sure there's going to be a problem there. Uh, seems to be, nothing seems to be organized. There's three to four guys working on this project any given day, and I've been there every day since watching them. Uh, it's a five-million-dollar project. I understand there's three or four guys working every day. We're going to be here for a long time. Uh, revenue at my store personally is down seventy percent. I've been there four years. Uh, Family Dollar, I spoke with the manager there, they're, they're down fifty percent. The parking lot is suffering. Uh, there's one way in from Oatmaugie, or they can come in through the back off of Broadway, and, uh, due to the heavy construction equipment and the increased traffic, it's really in bad shape. Also, I'm sure this is causing trouble for police, fire and ambulance that can't get through and the citizens in that area. Uh, I understand there's rain delays. Finally, a couple of the guys, representatives from H and G, came, uh, to the store today and pretty much passed the buck and blamed it on the city and said that there were water lines they didn't know about, and the weather has been backed up. But these guys leave at three-thirty in the afternoon every day, and there's no working on the weekends. Uh, if I owned that business and I wanted to get it done, I'd have those guys out there working till dark and, uh, on the weekends. I also understand that if it has to be done and these guys have to leave, somebody else is going to come in and finish their, or have to fix what's, uh, what the problem is. And I foresee that taking a long time. So, uh, what was first kind of comical watching these guys has now turned into, you know, is my, is my business in trouble and can I make it another year, because it's what it's looking like it's going to take? So, uh, that's my question is, what, what's going on down there and where's the oversight? I've seen nobody down there asking questions. I have seen a couple, uh, council members down there, and I really appreciate that. But as far as city officials, I haven't seen anybody down there asking questions. And if I paid somebody five million dollars to do a job, I'd be asking questions, you know, what the heck's going on? So feel free to come contact me at any time. It's just, I'm, I'm real concerned about my business. I've only been there four years, and, uh, you know, I have a wife and kids that depend on me, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lowe. Item twelve.
Consider an executive session to discuss and take possible action on the following. A, pursuant to Section three oh seven B two, Title twenty-five Oklahoma statutes, consider convening an executive session to discuss negotiations with the International Association of Firefighters, Local Number Fifty-seven, and if necessary, take appropriate action in open session. B, pursuant, pursuant to Section three oh seven B two, Title twenty-five Oklahoma statutes, consider convening an executive session to discuss negotiations with the American Federation of State, County and Municipal Employees, Local Number twenty-four sixty-five, and if necessary, take appropriate action in open session. C, pursuant to Section three oh seven B two, Title twenty-five Oklahoma statutes, consider convening an executive session to discuss negotiations with the Fraternal Order of Police, Lodge Number ninety-five, and if necessary, take appropriate action in open session. D, pursuant to Section three oh seven B four, Title twenty-five Oklahoma statutes, consider convening an execu- an executive session to discuss a pending claim or action related to the Twenty-Fourth Street Improvement Project, and if necessary, take appropriate action in open session.
All right, do we have a motion to go into executive session?
Councilor Coleman, I move that we go into executive session.
Councilor Morgan, second.
All right, any discussion? Roll call.
Tracy McGee.
Yes.
Stephanie Morgan.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Evelyn Hibbs.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Marlin Coleman.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Janie Boydston.
Yes, and the motion carries. Will you please excuse us while we go into executive session? And we're back. Roll call, please.
Mayor Janie Boydston.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Here.
Marlin Coleman.
Here.
Ivory Van.
Here.
Jamie Stout.
Here.
Evelyn Hibbs.
Here.
Alex Reynolds.
Here.
Stephanie Morgan.
Here.
Tracy McGee. Tracy McGee.
Mr. Tucker.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Item twelve A, pursuant to Section three oh seven B two, Title twenty-five Oklahoma statutes. The council did convene an executive session to discuss, uh, finalized negotiations with the International Association of Firefighters, Local Number Fifty-seven. Uh, after being briefed on the status of those, uh, final negotiations and being presented with a draft MOU as well as a draft, uh, twenty-twenty-one CBA, I think an appropriate motion would be to approve executing an MOU reflecting the parties' agreement to rollover, uh, provisions of the fiscal year twenty collective bargaining agreement to fiscal year twenty-twenty-one, as well as approval of the collective bargaining agreement for twenty-twenty-one.
Okay, that's for the firefighters?
That's correct. So, uh, to restate, that would be approval of the MOU and approval of the collective bargaining agreement.
Are we voting on these individually, or, so, I move for approval.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Stephanie Morgan.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Evelyn Hibbs.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Marlin Coleman.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Janie Boydston.
Yes, and the motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor. Item B, pursuant to Section three oh seven B two, Title twenty-five Oklahoma statutes. The city council did convene an executive session to discuss ongoing negotiations with the American Federation of State, County and Municipal Employees, Local Number twenty-four sixty-five. After being briefed of the status of those negotiations, which are not yet final, I believe an appropriate motion would be to approve an MOU between the city and AFSCME carrying over provisions of the, uh, fiscal year twenty collective bargaining agreement until a subsequent, uh, subsequent, uh, collective bargaining agreement for fiscal year twenty-twenty-one can be finalized.
All right, do we?
Does Councilor Stout move for approval?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Stephanie Morgan.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Evelyn Hibbs.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Marlin Coleman.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Janie Boydston.
Yes, the motion carried.
Thank you, Mayor. Item twelve C, pursuant to, uh, Section three oh seven B two, Title twenty-five Oklahoma statutes. The city council did convene an executive session to discuss, uh, final negotiations with the Fraternal Order of Police, Lodge Number ninety-five. After being briefed on the status of those negotiations, uh, which are in final form and being presented with a form, uh, excuse me, a draft, uh, collective bargaining agreement, I think an appropriate motion would be to approve executing an MOU reflecting an agreement to rollover provisions of the fiscal year twenty collective bargaining agreement to fiscal year twenty-twenty-one, as well as approval of the collective bargaining agreement for twenty-twenty-one between the parties.
Does Councilor Stout move for approval?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Stephanie Morgan.
Yes.
Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Evelyn Hibbs.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Marlin Coleman.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Janie Boydston.
Yes, and the motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor. Item twelve D, pursuant to Section three oh seven B four, Title twenty-five Oklahoma statutes. The council did convene an executive session to discuss a pending claim or action related to the Twenty-Fourth Street Improvement Project. Uh, once an executive session, the, uh, city council was briefed from staff on the ongoing issues that have plagued the Twenty-Fourth Street Improvement Project. Uh, based upon a discuss, based upon the discussion, I think an appropriate action would be, excuse me, an appropriate motion would be to authorize the city manager, with the advice of the city attorney, to take all necessary steps to enforce the terms of the contract between the city and H and G Paving Contractors, Inc., including, but not limited to, Declaration of Default of the Contract.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve? Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? Roll call.
Stephanie Morgan. Alex Reynolds.
Yes.
Evelyn Hibbs.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Ivory Van.
Yes.
Marlin Coleman.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Janie Boydston.
Yes, and the motion carries. And that concludes our agenda, so with the admonition for everybody to stay safe, we are adjourned.